Waiting for Sengstak.
Oh, no.
No.
Nope.
We wait for Mickey.
Mickey.
Tried to hold on until Michael May can make it.
No, this guy was, this guy was.
109th Street. And he's been contacting people. 39. Yeah. So I'll skip that one when we get to it and try to give him the time to get it.
They were a while ago.
With Alderman Chapleski.
Making it in here. I saw that. I saw that. Please, please. With that, we will, Public Works will now come into session. And the first item on tonight's agenda is item number 31. And this will be a joint referral with Safety and Development. It's communication from Kirk Wachholz, Superintendent of School of West Dallas, City of West Milwaukee, relative to the acquisition of land behind the West Dallas Police Station for development of a soccer field and multi-use artificial surface. Mike, do you have some background on this?
Yeah, Kirk's got a letter in there requesting to either purchase or obtain that property and back at a police station for basically for soccer courts, as I understand it. And John's working, you'll be hearing more about this as the agreement and as the follow-up resolutions come in front of you. Right now, we're just recommending places on file.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Weigel, seconded by, I think that was Alderman Ranky.
I think so.
With that, is there any further discussion on this communication? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? He's going to set that in the court because we'll get that over too. Thank you very much. Where's the other one? Let's take that up right away. Is that 46? Item number 46 on tonight's agenda, resolution adopted in finals submitted by the City of West Dallas Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Prepared by the Bicycle Federation of Wisconsin. Again, we will, Mike Lewis, our city engineer.
Yeah, that's an old one. I think that was first brought 2009, was that study done? Hopefully, everyone got my email I sent out today. Got two issues, engineering issues. There are, number one, of course, is funding. And number two is that the study did not take a detailed look in every street that is recommended in there for bicycle path or trailer, whatever you want to call it, in the way, is there room to actually have it? Okay. That was not part of the, that was not part of the study. It never was. And we have not looked at it as a department, nor will we have time to look at something in that amount of detail. So that's, that's one thing that I told John about today, this evening, and something that we'll be working on in the future, is looking at additional money to get us, to get that part of a study done in order to make sure that what's in that report can actually be done in the field.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, let's see. Alderman Weigel.
I guess I'll move to approve if we want to. Otherwise, we can't discuss it, right?
Well, you can keep discussing without, without motion.
Okay. Well, I'd like to, I'd like to ask the city engineers if we approve this, does this require us to do anything? Does this plan require us to do anything?
No. Not, not, not as I read it.
Doesn't require suspended dime.
Not as I read it, no.
So, but as I understand, the advantage is that, once we have a plan, it does allow us to apply for state and federal aids to help some of these things happen.
If there's money, I haven't looked at the, I assume there's some money on that.
Yeah. So I understand your concern about funding because, you know, we don't want to take on any, any responsibilities that we can't afford to do. But this plan doesn't require us to do anything.
Is it advantageous to us to respond with another backup resolution, perhaps at the next meeting, with that concern, saying, we did approve the, the plan, however, the City of West Dallas is concerned about, and then have some bullet points and make a statement that we send on, voicing our concerns? I would think that that would be.
Yeah, we paid them for the point.
We can, John and I can talk about that and have something or.
Director of Development, John Steeble.
That's not a bad idea. This is a plan, just so that we lay out where we want to go. It also helps us to talk to DNR about putting bike paths on Highway 100. If we adopt a plan, we could say, leave a plan that doesn't provide for that. Our plan is, is different. And that's why we want to have a plan, so that we can have something that we could use as a guide. All this is a guide, we don't have to do anything. Every time we do something, it's going to come up as a separate issue, but at least we've, we've made an overall guide of how we want to envision this to be done. We don't ever have to implement it that way. Plans change, plans evolve. So we've got to start with something, and here's a plan to start with, and then we can modify it as we go along.
So, so what you're saying is, we adopt this plan, but then come back with another plan, or just come back with concerns?
Well, we will modify the plan as we get, as we go forward. Once we get a master plan.
Which is right here.
Yes. Then we'll start modifying as we go through. Because we've got to look at, like what Mike brought up, a legitimate argument.
Right.
About are there some streets that it can't accommodate? Well, I had hoped that the consultant that we had hired had evaluated that, but if Mike's got a, Mike's concerned, now I'm concerned. And so now we've got to go back and find out exactly, to make sure that this is implementable. But that's, but each time we do a street, we'll reconsider whether we want to do that or not. So it's always going to come up. Just like whether we do a street or not, we consider that every time we've done, we have a capital improvements program, the same way we'll do with the bike plan, whether we want to do a bike plan on those streets or not.
Very good.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Basically, you're saying that this is a plan for our future.
Yes.
I see. Mike has indicated some valid arguments that need to be considered, I would say. From what you're saying, and maybe I don't understand, but correct me if I'm wrong, anything that we decide to do has to come to council for approval.
That is correct.
And we have to, before we would do anything, we would have to have the funding for this project.
That is correct. Just like the capital improvements program for all our streets, our five-year, 10-year, we have a plan.
Yes.
And so we've got something to start from. And then every time Mike brings a street to you, as it comes up, you're going to approve it again. And you'll approve it several times before it ever gets done. And the same, and this is just going to integrate in with that capital improvements program as to how it's going to be done. Just like you do, sometimes you drop something that you're not, you don't want to do it this year, or don't want to do it at all. This is just a plan, just a guide.
Mr. Chair, again, if we approve this plan, does that mean that we put our blessing on everything in the plan? Because there are some aspects of the plan that I don't necessarily approve of.
It's just a guide.
Okay.
Now, we will come back and, we should talk to you some more about what you don't want and don't like, because we're going to have to modify this plan. Just as we have our comprehensive land use plan that guides the city on our redevelopment, sometimes we'll amend that comprehensive plan to take some land out of industrial, make it residential, vice versa. So we'll keep modifying it as, as your good wisdom decides to do.
Thank you.
It's a living document. It's a living document that will be amended and modified.
Okay.
With that, Alderman Weigel.
Move approval.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Weigel, seconded by Alderman Roat. Is there further discussion on item number 46? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Moving on, number 32, resolution accepting the work of UPI LLC for the installment of concrete curb gutter, concrete pavement miscellaneous walk repair, driveway replacement, sanitary sewer relay, sanitary sewer storm sewer relay.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Weigel, seconded by, who was quick there in that second?
Chapleski.
Alderman Chapleski. Further discussion on item number 32? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Number 33, resolution accepting the work of MJ Construction Incorporated for the installation of concrete curb gutter. Second. Moved by Alderman Chapleski, seconded by, we're going to give it to Alderman Ranky. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Number 36 on tonight's agenda is resolution authorizing and directly, directing the director of Public Works city engineer to pay for the sanitary sewer lateral repairs at 13.
Move approval.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chapleski, seconded by Alderman Weigel. Any further discussion on 36?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Chapleski.
This is excessively high. I haven't seen one this high. Man, this is twice as much as everybody. You know why? It's just one of these real deep ones?
It probably was, it probably was deep out there. And it might have spanned it, you know, that, we're doing that street for a reason.
Right.
And we might have not been able to find any good pipe to literally attach or connect to. So they might, they might have chased it a little bit there too.
Yeah, this is between Greenfield and National.
But in detail, it's all based on the amount of work, depth, how much pipe they have to replace, how far they have to go. My, my staff reviews this, as soon as we, when we're out there, as soon as we determine that, that this is our problem.
Right.
We're out there all the time monitoring the work. So at least in their view, and their past experience, this is a reasonable price for what was done. I think the world record that I've had, unfortunately, is about 35,000 pounds.
We're incurring a lot of these.
It won't get any better.
Right.
Just trying to cheer you up there, Rosley.
Any further discussion on item number 36? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Number 37 on tonight's agenda, resolution authorizing directing the director of Public Works city engineer to pay for sanitary sewer lateral repair at 2415 South 72th Street.
Move approval.
Second.
Who was that? Was that Alderman Weigel? Weigel, and seconded by Alderman Ranky. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Number 38 on tonight's agenda, resolution to oppose the construction of any alternatives for the I-94 east-west corridor that do not include access to both 70th Street and Holly Road slash 60th Street.
Move to approve.
Moved by Alderman.
Second.
Ranky, seconded by Alderman Roat. Further discussion? Alderman May had his hand up first.
Okay.
Alderman May.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick suggestions. We want to make sure it's absolutely crystal clear that what we want is ramps at Holly Road and at 70th. And I think perhaps the discussion of the double-decking freeway and discussion of traffic on city streets, I don't know if that really helps our cause any. I wonder if maybe those two should be struck.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I was asking if we could see a copy of this resolution. I mean, I understand that's probably the gist of it, but is there, what is there?
I didn't get a chance to talk, talk to Alderman May today on this. I did send out, I did send out, because I got it through Alderman Lysick, which is supposed to be on Safety and Development tonight. Responded to some questions with him on this and with John Steeble. I think those two sections are relatively important in this, in this resolution. Number one, the DOT asks come up in their documents saying that if it's not double-decked out there, Holly, Holly is done, is gone. And I believe that there's going to be some pretty strong opposition out there from the, from the Story Hill people, probably City of Milwaukee regarding that double-decker. So I think, I think it's important for us to go as a city on record that we support that double-decker because we want and assist upon the Holly Road thing in there. Also, as the DOT has done the Wabatoosa, and as they are proposing to do to us on Highway 100, I am very much opposed for them basically pushing their traffic problems on, in this case, I-94, but in Highway 100's case, 894, onto our local streets. And, and I think that this is one thing that they consistently have forgotten about, that we keep trying to remind them, and I'll be reminding Dwayne Johnson next Wednesday with over coffee, not with beers, over coffee in the morning. Should be beers, anyway. That week that I really don't want this type of through traffic that I want them to be pushing their traffic problems and their volume onto our local streets. And I think it's also important to have that in there. And I do think that, I mean, the State of Wisconsin officials are relatively smart, and even though we don't always agree with them, are pretty smart. And I think they can, they can comprehend a few additional points in a resolution that we send in them, even though the most important part of a resolution certainly is to keep access at 70th Street and 60th Street. But it's a good, but it's a good time to tell them what we feel on these two other, on these two other items.
Alderman May.
My only concern with that double-decker is, you know, if we can push them to do four lanes at grade, it's still getting our ramps. If they decide to stick with three lanes at capacity in direction with our ramps, if we can, if we delete that, at least that first, be a further resolved, it still gets the point across, we want ramps. And if that means for them, we keep the double-decker, that's up to them. I, I can say, I think it's good the way it is. I think it just helps make it even clearer, you know, I think they can provide ramps.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigel.
Okay, so, like a lot of resolutions, there's a lot of whereas, isn't there? A lot of whereas. And then the be further resolved is that the common council supports the construction of a double-deck freeway if at-grade alternatives cannot accommodate access to both 70th Street and Holly Road 60th Street. I understand Alderman May's concerns on this. I don't, I don't care if they double-deck the thing. I just want them to keep our access. So I think the idea that we're supporting double-decking, I don't, I don't think there's a reason for us to keep that supporting double-decking in there. You know, I'm not an engineer. I can't find the problem. I can't find, I don't care if they double-deck it. I just want those ramps kept open.
That's what I want the message to be.
And then the other thing here that sounds kind of contradictory is, and this be a further resolved, that the common council opposes any I-94 for alternatives that create more traffic on city streets or that involve widening or other impacts to city streets. Well, we want Holly Road 70th and 70th Street to remain open to allow traffic on the streets. So they could actually say, well, hey, you guys, you didn't want any more cars on your street, we're closing all the ramps off. You know, this, the idea, and I understand the city engineer's concerns, because the freeway's job is to carry people long distances. Not, and if they're pushing that onto Greenfield or National or Blue Mountain or wherever they do it, that's, that's, that's a failure on DOT's part. But this, this is not exactly crystal clear here to me. For sure, I would say, again, I don't care if they double-deck it or not, I just want the Holly 60th Street ramps to stay open. So that'd be a suggestion for me is we just take out that. Supports the construction of a double-deck freeway. No, it should be further resolved that the common council supports accommodations that allow access to both 70th Street and Holly Road 60th Street.
Move to approve.
Moved by Alderman.
Second.
Ranky, seconded by Alderman Roat. Further discussion? Alderman May had his hand up first.
Okay. Alderman May.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick suggestions. We want to make sure it's absolutely crystal clear that what we want is ramps at Holly Road and at 70th. And I think perhaps the discussion of the double-decking freeway and discussion of traffic on city streets, I don't know if that really helps our cause any. I wonder if maybe those two should be struck.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I was asking if we could see a copy of this resolution. I mean, I understand that's probably the gist of it, but is there, what is there?
I didn't get a chance to talk, talk to Alderman May today on this. I did send out, I did send out, because I got it through Alderman Lysick, which is supposed to be on Safety and Development tonight. Responded to some questions with him on this and with John Steeble. I think those two sections are relatively important in this, in this resolution. Number one, the DOT asks come up in their documents saying that if it's not double-decked out there, Holly, Holly is done, is gone. And I believe that there's going to be some pretty strong opposition out there from the, from the Story Hill people, probably City of Milwaukee regarding that double-decker. So I think, I think it's important for us to go as a city on record that we support that double-decker because we want and assist upon the Holly Road thing in there. Also, as the DOT has done the Wabatoosa, and as they are proposing to do to us on Highway 100, I am very much opposed for them basically pushing their traffic problems on, in this case, I-94, but in Highway 100's case, 894, onto our local streets. And, and I think that this is one thing that they consistently have forgotten about, that we keep trying to remind them, and I'll be reminding Dwayne Johnson next Wednesday with over coffee, not with beers, over coffee in the morning. Should be beers, anyway. That week that I really don't want this type of through traffic that I want them to be pushing their traffic problems and their volume onto our local streets. And I think it's also important to have that in there. And I do think that, I mean, the State of Wisconsin officials are relatively smart, and even though we don't always agree with them, are pretty smart. And I think they can, they can comprehend a few additional points in a resolution that we send in them, even though the most important part of a resolution certainly is to keep access at 70th Street and 60th Street. But it's a good, but it's a good time to tell them what we feel on these two other, on these two other items.
Alderman May.
My only concern with that double-decker is, you know, if we can push them to do four lanes at grade, it's still getting our ramps. If they decide to stick with three lanes at capacity in direction with our ramps, if we can, if we delete that, at least that first, be a further resolved, it still gets the point across, we want ramps. And if that means for them, we keep the double-decker, that's up to them. I, I can say, I think it's good the way it is. I think it just helps make it even clearer, you know, I think they can provide ramps.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigel.
Okay, so, like a lot of resolutions, there's a lot of whereas, isn't there? A lot of whereas. And then the be further resolved is that the common council supports the construction of a double-deck freeway if at-grade alternatives cannot accommodate access to both 70th Street and Holly Road 60th Street. I understand Alderman May's concerns on this. I don't, I don't care if they double-deck the thing. I just want them to keep our access. So I think the idea that we're supporting double-decking, I don't, I don't think there's a reason for us to keep that supporting double-decking in there. You know, I'm not an engineer. I can't find the problem. I can't find, I don't care if they double-deck it. I just want those ramps kept open.
That's what I want the message to be.
And then the other thing here that sounds kind of contradictory is, and this be a further resolved, that the common council opposes any I-94 for alternatives that create more traffic on city streets or that involve widening or other impacts to city streets. Well, we want Holly Road 70th and 70th Street to remain open to allow traffic on the streets. So they could actually say, well, hey, you guys, you didn't want any more cars on your street, we're closing all the ramps off. You know, this, the idea, and I understand the city engineer's concerns, because the freeway's job is to carry people long distances. Not, and if they're pushing that onto Greenfield or National or Blue Mountain or wherever they do it, that's, that's, that's a failure on DOT's part. But this, this is not exactly crystal clear here to me. For sure, I would say, again, I don't care if they double-deck it or not, I just want the Holly 60th Street ramps to stay open. So that'd be a suggestion for me is we just take out that. Supports the construction of a double-deck freeway. No, it should be further resolved that the common council supports accommodations that allow access to both 70th Street and Holly 60th Street interchanges. You know, that'd be my suggestion for an edit. You could take it, the committee could take it, whatever, however they want to, but I don't care if they double-deck it. I just want Holly Road left open.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I kind of agree with, with that, taking it out there, just from the simple point is that Story Hill doesn't want it, and so I don't want to get on, I'd rather have them on our side keeping the exit there than, than have them now fighting against us because we're in favor of the double-decker. You know, I think we just, we'll not create an enemy here. So.
So when the, Mr. Chair, in the resolution, it indicates that we basically are looking only at the double-decker?
It says that we support double-decking. If.
If.
If they can't find another accommodation. I think we just leave the double-deck mention out of it entirely. We, we support accommodations that allow 60th Street and Holly Road to remain open as, as well as 70th Street.
So, so what we'd be looking for is, is be a further resolved that the common council supports ramps that accommodate access to both 70th and Holly Road 60th Street.
Correct.
So anybody want to make the motion to?
So moved.
To amend?
As amended.
Second. For the amendment?
Who did the amendment?
It was Alderman Weigel.
And Roat.
And Roat seconded it. Let's vote on the amendment only. All in favor of amending number 38 on tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Carried. So, number 38 will be to adopt as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Weigel, seconded by Alderman Ranky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. With that, we move on to number 39. This is a resolution authorizing a director of public works city engineer to temporarily close 109th, 110th, 111th, 111th Place, and 112th at Theater Tracker Way.
Move approval.
Moved by Alderman Weigel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ranky. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
What are you doing? You're just putting what, concrete barriers up?
Either concrete, we're taking a look at the plastic barriers filled with, basically filled with water, you can also fill it with sand. And putting it, and putting them up temporarily again to completely, right now, 109th Street to shut off. This is also includes related signing. I put a number in there, up to 6,000 hours. My preliminary estimates are around 55, so, anyway, barricades on 109th and 110th at this point. Leaving the option open for the other three roadways. We'll see what happens.
And if, if I can start, because the, the first option, I believe, is just 109th. We didn't, we didn't do, yeah, we didn't do any of the, we have a petition, and it's right here, of, of the people on, on 109th Street, and we're going to enter this into the record, and we'll be placing it on file at the next common council meeting, but it was signed by almost everybody on the block, I think, except for two people of mine.
Two people out baking houses.
Okay.
Long, long.
What, what it would be, from my understanding, is it would be, they fill them with water and they put them there, and they would put them up around May 15th and take them down somewhere around October 1st, September 15th, somewhere in that area, and literally make it a dead end.
You're just creating a dead end.
You got it.
At Theater Tracker.
Yes. At Theater Tracker Drive. And finally, it's going to give the people on 109th their life back. When the Speedway did go in, and if I would have foreseen that, and nobody foresaw the cruising aspect, you know, they came down to Greenfield Avenue, and that's where they turned around. Speedway opens up and all of a sudden this magnet just appears. And if you ever go there on a Friday, Saturday night, it's, it's quite entertaining, however, it's not a lot of fun. Just last weekend, there was a, a major accident there, I think it was on, on Saturday night. Took out the light poles, et cetera, and it's all from them. Creating that is, and that's why we have any other streets. I live on 110th, so my street would be next. But for now, it's going to be open, and then I would be responsible privately to get the signatures of our block if it starts to come down. We don't know how far they're going to keep going before they're going to say, you know, that's far enough, I'm going down into darkness here. The only purpose of me going to the Speedway is to be under the lights so they can see my car and they can hear my stereo. I mean, that, that's their purpose. So when Speedway backs up, the cars then go on 109th Street because they can't get through the parking lot at the Speedway Station.[1540.88] And that's where their problem comes in. So, we've talked about this for I don't know how many years, about the possibility of doing this, or cul-de-sac-ing it, et cetera. We got all the costs of the different options. Uh, cul-de-sacking would be up to $35,000 a road to permanently shut them down. This was just a, probably one of the least expensive that we could do, and yet be able to block the roads up for a good period of time and create a dead end, but yet open it back up so snow plowing, et cetera, can, can continue. Cruising dies off, usually runs, it's, it's, it's there all year, but it dies down a lot around September 15th, et cetera. All right. Want no more questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman Weigel?
I guess, I mean, clearly the Department of Engineering Public Works knows about this, so they, we'll make accommodations for refuse collection on the street. Um, and I guess the other question would be safety, not only our fire EMTs, but we at Mutual Aid, and I would imagine occasionally maybe a Waluata squad might be responding, want to make sure that they would, that all gets taken care of automatically as notifications, you know?
Yeah. And, and obviously dead ends are no, I, I grew up on 113th, which is just three blocks away, 113, 114, 115, yeah, are all dead ends. So, I mean, police, fire, they're used to dead ends, they know how to operate in them, and they will be notified at the fax. Alderman, may?
Uh, we also talked to the fire department, called up the chief, made sure he was okay with it, and he said, you know, as long as there's space to the, a certain distance, he can, the trucks, based on the poundage and the weight of these things, he feels they could push.
So like in a real emergency, I mean.
He could push them out of the way.
The, the fire trucks just kind of nudge them out of the ways.
That's right.
If they needed to.
That's right. And then, um, what Alderman Barzak and I are thinking, just watching all the traffic patterns, what happens is people, they make the left turn off Highway 100, come in, and if the gas station is full, that's when they go around the street. And, uh, what we think will happen is we'll probably get 110th, 111th in this as well.
That's a valid death.
By the time you go there, it's just easier for the person to make a U-turn on Theater Tracker itself. There's just not the traffic at night on Theater Tracker.
Or up on Highway 100 where we want them.
Right. So, we've tried policing, the cops can't be there at all hours of the night. Um, we've tried enforcement, it helps a little bit, it's just not doing the job. We tried talking to Speedway about, um, having someone there to keep the loiterers going, and, um, that worked for a year, but it doesn't sound like it's going to happen again, so engineers giving this a shot, see what happens.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Is it possible to call, let the station close at 12?
Well, you know, that, that has, that has been a discussion that we have brought up under the special use, and Speedway has, of course, threatened to take us to court saying that cruising's a traffic problem, that is not, you know, their issue. It, it's your issue to be able to police the amount of traffic that comes down a public road. And they probably would have a pretty good case on their hand, so, um, the city attorney basically advised, you know, this probably would be an easier or cheaper way to go at this point, but now, if the problem would persist, um, you know, we, we may be able to document some things, and that's, that's a possibility.
Okay.
We're looking at that, that is definitely on one of the points that, of our strategies, so.
That seems like a valid reason to call, I think, close them down earlier. Um, Mr. Chairman, also, um, the word temporarily, to me, seems rather vague. Do we want to indicate the time period?
I think it's in here.
That will, that it will be?
It's, it's just through, just here, 2013.
I see.
Is what this resolution, and, and it's a trial. We're going to see what, we're going to see what happens. And if it works, and hopefully it works, then we'll have something more permanent.
Okay.
And we'll probably have something more permanent on what we're deciding to do at the end of the street there, too, instead of these barricades sitting up there all the time, every year. It's a, it's a cheap way, relatively cheap way to give it a shot.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion on number 39 in tonight's agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 40 in tonight's agenda is a communication to the director of public works, city engineer, regarding two revised fees for weed cutting. Mike?
Uh, hopefully everyone got the memo through the email, what I'm proposing here. Uh, we took a look at our fees for our beloved grass cutting, especially with all the work that we've been doing so far in the spring, and will continue to be doing. More realistic fees are what I've gotten here, is a straight $200 charge, administration charge only for the amount of paperwork, checking and, and whatnot. And instead of, instead of going out there and individually measuring every lot, like we have been doing in the past, we're just looking at two flat fees based on the width of the lot. If it's, if it's up to 60 feet, which is the vast majority of lots here in town, it's a straight $100. If it's, if it's 61 feet and above, it was 150.
Yeah, 150.
So that, so that will save a lot of time and effort and expedite the cutting out there, which I, which I'm sure everyone here is concerned about, just getting the work done. Now, last year, I believe, we went down from a 10-day waiting period down to five. Uh, one of the reasons why we brought back the cutting in-house and doing it in-house now is, is again to speed up the process, and I think, I think we have been speeding up the process and, and been going at these problems and, and these lots, and private and public, and getting a lot of work done these last couple of weeks.
Mr. Chairman? Alderman, Rote?
Is doing it in-house, is that taking away from cutting the police department, the boulevards, our public areas?
Um, not really so far, because we've been able to get at them with, with, remember, our summer kids came back, now, basically the last part of me. So, we're, we're our summer kids out there, and we've been utilizing other staff down at the, down at the yard in order to do this. So, I, I don't think it's been harming or sacrificing other work out there. Monitoring, keeping an eye on a contractor brings a whole bunch of other related problems and time factors out there. Monitoring any contractor can be a handful at the same time. So I think, again, it's a trial basis, if, if bringing it in-house proves, proves us that it fails this year and it hasn't worked, then we're going to go back to try contracting again. But I believe so far it has worked.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman.
I guess I'm looking for clarification, is this $200 plus the additional fee?
Yes. We are proposing $300 for 60-foot lot.
Right, it sounds like it.
Mr. Chairman? What, what were we charging before?
Uh, 150, um, minimum.
Okay.
So, let's say our contractor spent $50 to cut the, to actually cut it, then it was $150 minimum to that lot. But we don't believe that, that that included all of the cost related to doing this work. And I think that the, the council has, has continuously asked departments to make sure that your fees are consistent with the amount of work that you're actually doing out there, and not subsidizing. We have been subsidizing, at least in our view, we've been subsidizing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Alderman Weigel.
I don't understand how, if we had a contractor that was charging us $50, and we're collecting $150, we're 100 of the positive.
Yes.
How was that being subsidized? To me, that, to me, when we, we're at the point of seeing.
That should have been, actually, that should have actually been $200 for the administration fee, along with what we're proposing here is, is $100.
So, you're saying we have $200 in staff time in administering?
And I've got a.
Getting somebody out there to mow the lawn.
I mean, the amount of work there we have to do with this, um, and, and I can certainly make copies of this, but my, what I've got here, looking at $201.20, when you get, when you add up receiving a call, checking the property, looking at the property owner, rechecking in five days, updating databases and that, that we, that we keep down there, um, sending, sending it to finance, so they send out the billing. Um, then of course, maintenance, we go back there and we even do a maintenance check to make sure that the property is cut again. Remember, most, most times, once you cut a property, you're going to get kind of stuck cutting it.
And then we get another $200. So that check, that checking back isn't on the first $200, that's going to be on the second $200.
Is that how we got it, is that how we got it figured out?
Once we go back again, we're going to hit them up another 200 bucks, right?
Yeah, because the process starts over again. When you add up.
That seems a little punitive to me, you know? I, I guess that just seems like, and I guess the only people who are going to get hit up on it are the people that aren't mowing their lawns, right?
Yeah. Why do you want to subsidize the people that aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing?
You're right. We talk about what it takes to make a nice neighborhood.
Heard it loud and clear an hour ago.
I get it.
I, I, it, to me, yeah, it's very expensive. So, if I'm a, if I'm a homeowner, I'm saying, somebody check out long that grass is so we can get out there and cut it. My wife right now is cutting the grass twice a week.
I don't think we charge that much when a property's deemed a nuisance, and we tend, we send two sworn officers on a call there. I don't think it's 200 bucks.
But for our garbage, though, for sanitary side, we charge $200 too.
And, and Ted, I don't think Ted's here. Um, I think some of the times, too, if you, if you call them in to, to inspection, they'll go out there and knock on the door, and they'll say, I had a complaint, um, you know, you're not cutting your lawn. And they, you know, they may tell you to go pound sand, well, then, then they're going to get those $200, but they're going to give them the opportunity to cut their lawn before they, you know, get this charge, so. Yes.
I think Alderman Chapleski's committee that hears the appeals on this fee is going to get very busy, but.
So, Mr. Chairman? Will we be indicating to the homeowner, or whoever owns the home, uh, that we will be charging this fee?
Do they get a warning?
They get a warning.
They, they all get letters. That's all part of the fee.
And what happens?
But, but it's five days.
And what happens?
Well, they get five, yeah.
What happens if they don't pay the bill?
It goes on your property taxes.
I see.
And it's, and when they pay their property taxes, it's the first thing that comes off the check. Some people like to play games, and they like, they don't give a check for the amount of the property tax, and they'll, and they'll delete the fees on there. Doesn't work that way under state law. The special charges get paid first.
And then they owe the rest.
Then they owe the rest of their property.
I see, okay.
Alderman?
Is that accurate, did I hear that right, that, and I'm guessing Lynn would be the guy to answer it. You do knock on their door and say, we're sending you.
We don't knock, we leave a door hanger.
Okay.
You do, but if you call inspection, they may go out, they knock on the door.
Right, right.
Because I know that, I can't remember his name, he just did it, on a property on 112.
Knock on the door, leave a door hanger.
They do get notified.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Alderman.
We have another thing that, on the agenda, I requested to discuss about, about cutting the grass and, and everything. Pretty much we're discussing it now.
Yep.
You know, so, and taking these together. Now, uh, you're saying that, that if we raise the fee here, we're going to be able to pay for everything, for, for taking care of everything. I mean, last year, I mean, last year was a little ridiculous at times. I mean, I had one that took almost 60 days to be done, you know, and, uh, we don't want that to happen again, you know, because then we get everybody saying, why did I get ticket and they didn't? And, uh, but, but you're, you're saying that we can cover it all with this fee, no matter how many we get, because obviously you get more money than.
In my staff's opinion, these are the guys right here, who do it virtually every day in the, in the summertime, this is what, this is what their judgment is, and this is what the actual cost of this service is.
My understanding, you're, you're three down in your staff, and so, and you still can handle that, or?
Well, we've got, we're real close to replacing two of them and working on the third.
Okay. Now, these are just, these are arborists, or?
Arborists.
They're all arborists?
Yeah.
We're covering most of the grass mowing with the temporaries, the college kids, using them to do, do the private properties.
What happens when they can't keep up with it?
Well, we could.
We got, we got ways to move people around to do it. Well, like we said.
We do things, yeah, we got these things.
Yeah, like I said, this is a trial year for us, and obviously if it doesn't work out, at least we gave it the try, and we just feel this is a better way of doing it compared to using the contractor, because we had a lot of issues using the contractor.
Well, I, I had a lot of issues using the contractors, even though, even though I thought you know, we could have maybe went with two different contractors, or, or put zones, you know, contractors, this area and this area, you know, could have done something like that, too, but, uh.
And we might, we'll.
We're only a couple of weeks into this right now, I mean, we're month in and all this, and we'll, we'll be evaluating it.
Mr. Chairman? Alderman, Rote? And I guess this, again, you answered it, just a one-year, let's see how it flies.
And if it works, great, we'll keep going.
Okay.
If we can't handle it, then we try it.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'd like to give you a couple of numbers. We've, uh, we have 52 abandoned properties that have been stickered by building inspections. We've checked them all, we've mowed 29, all 29 that needed to be mowed, have been mowed. Uh, we've got 82 other non-abandoned requests, some from you, some from citizens. All of them are up to date on the five-day cycle. So they've all been lettered, we've mowed a couple of them, most of them, when we, as Lynn said, when we leave the letter, we leave a letter on the door in case the resident or the occupant is not the same as the owner, and then we mail the owner a letter, and that has really helped, it's, it's cut down our, our need to mow some of these properties almost in half. And now, when we revise our letter, if we can let them know what the fees are, and they'll be checking back more than once, we think that's going to, going to help us some more. So, um, from that standpoint, things, things are actually, and we're caught up on our mowing, we've almost mowed all of our locations twice, we still have a few to get through, but, um, we've put additional mowers out there and people, and we're catching up on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Okay, now, on the abandoned houses, the vacant houses, uh, we go into this new fee, that fee goes on all those houses every time we cut them? How's that work?
They might be abandoned, but somebody owns them. And may, maybe some of these properties that are abandoned, and basically the banks many times own them, will actually get their so-called property managers out there and start doing something.
That's funny, that's funny.
Alderman, may?
I've got a question about the fee. It says here, $100 flat fee, $150 flat fee, we all talked about 200, and at one point it was mentioned 300 and 350.
Yep.
What's the amount?
300 and 350.
Okay, back to the idea of it being punitive, can we defend that in a court of law? I guess that's what I'm worried about.
That's what he's, that's what he told us today about, we discussed.
He said he's okay with the 300 and 350.
Yes, well, no, that's for us to defend.
Defend.
And I believe that with the information I have here, from these guys.
I can see defending 200, we're worried about the 300, 350, but I guess we'll wait.
Well, no, that's the 200 is administration fee, all the paperwork, all the garbage that we have to do, until we actually get out there and do it.
And then that's for the 150.
And that's the 100 and 150, that's the actual work.
Okay. And then, in terms of other areas getting mowed, I've gotten calls from people about the medians on 92nd Street, you know, they're, they're mowing, you know, how can you expect me to mow my lawn when the city's not mowing their lawn? Um, the, I'm not sure if it would fit into this, but, you know, they're, they're worried about the condition of the trees, with the suckers growing out of the side of them, and that's always a pet peeve of mine, I hate watching trees look that way. Are we, um, do we need to take other action, I guess, to, to help you out? Um, is there anything we could do to help move up some of that tree maintenance and median maintenance and?
Well, we're, we're close to having all the medians cut twice, and the, the three additional arborists that we're kind of getting should help us with the suckers, consider it.
Yeah, I think the grass is, is really, really good as of today, I mean, it's almost been around twice, that's everything, so.
I know it's a tough year.
Yeah, I mean, this is, weather-wise, I think out of 19 mowing days, on one stretch, we had like six days where we couldn't mow, one was a holiday, and five were rain days. And we do try to mow day after it rains, and it makes, you know, quite a mess. Sometimes we just have to mow when we should.
We will, we will be coming back, probably to very near future, unfortunately, when Ashford finally kicks in, hard, we're going to be, we're going to be wiped out.
Alderman Chapleski? Just one other thing, uh, helping me in Lincoln Avenue there, I saw the guy cutting, it was pretty long before he cut it the first time. Was it, was it longer because we are waiting to hire the summer help, or?
Probably a trial. I had a pleasure.
This thing started growing faster earlier or something?
Oh, yeah.
Because I, I, he struggled, and it looked like when he was done, but, but he was really struggling with it.
I've been here 38 years, and this is probably one of the worst years that I've seen as far as grass growing.
Thinking of it, trial for less.
Yeah, it is. And I mean, nobody feels bad or worse about it than Mike and I, but, you know, we're doing the best we can, and I can't, I do have a control.
Okay.
Took a little bit, but.
Looking for a motion, item number 40?
I'm going to place a file.
Second.
Move to approve.
Oh, it's a community.
Alderman Chapleski, move to approve, seconded by Alderman Rote, is that correct?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on item number 40? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? And thank you for coming in and spending your time with us.
Thank you.
Um, number 41 on tonight's agenda, resolution approving the emergency repairs at the water reservoir payable to Rodney Hunt Fontaine Limited, and the amount not to exceed $50,000. Mike?
Now, this is a budget item, pretty sure. Uh, we knew this valve on our, on one of the pumps at the reservoir was, was questionable. Remember, I brought this up probably a month or so ago, because we, we thought we had some other problems out there that we had to address first. Those other problems, um, were fixed, basically were, were fixed, so we're back to the original project now, and the original budgeted project, um, to replace the valve on, I believe, pump number three out there. Um, and it, this, this only replaces the valve, it's $41,000, whatever it happens to be in there. Uh, we'll be coming in the future regarding installing this valve in there. So again, I think we had budgeted fifty thousand for this, so it'll, it'll come up to that, to, to do this work.
Is this the reservoir in Lincoln?
Uh, the reservoir off of Rogers.
Rogers, I see.
The reservoir park.
Okay.
And in all likelihood, in the, in this upcoming budget, I'll be putting money in there to, to make an engineering study of the facility out there. I, I hate to do really, um, piecemeal repairs on something that is that old and is that important out there. I want more of a, I want somebody to take a look at it and knows a lot more than I know, know about it, uh, to give us some kind of a plan of attack to make scheduled repairs on it. Just as much as we're getting this, a plan of attack on our roofs here too, um, and some other, and some other various issues that you'll be hearing about in the future. I, I don't wanna get painted in these type of corners, I, like a, like a plan of attack, a logical plan of attack that we can budget for and take a look at. Cause if something bad happens out there, I'm in some big problems.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chapeleski, seconded by Alderman Ranky, is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried? Now, um, the other item that was on tonight is the, um, discussion regarding the review of grass cutting and tree maintenance.
I think we did a.
And if you're satisfied with that? Then with that, that'll come to conclusion of public works. And again, I'd like to thank gentlemen for coming tonight and sharing the information with us, thank you. And for everybody that was waiting for license and health, for being patient, but, um, you got a little education at the same time, so. With that, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Michael Chapeleski, who is the chairman of license and health.
You'll be taking it right away? Yeah. License and health has now come to order because I'm the vice chair and Alderman Chapeleski's on the agenda, so.
Oh, okay. We're gonna go to item fifty-seven. Everybody there?
Uh, yeah, it must be the, the license.
Is it his license?
Yeah.
I don't even know if we'll have it, I don't think we'll even have it.
Second hand, you're like, I, I'm overcooled, Mr. Vice Chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Four in favor, one present.
You said you're getting us present.
He's still gonna bring it out.
Okay, ready for it?
He still could've brought it out. So now, the meeting gets returned to Chairman, Michael Chapeleski.
We're gonna start it off, then we need number sixty-nine.
Nav, nagivani, biyadjarla. It's a perfect end. Correct pronunciation?
Close.
Okay, now this is, uh, you're looking for just wine?
Wine, sorry, beer license, I didn't beer license.
Okay, didn't we have a?
There used to be a place called like Mr. Zaid's, and now.
They, they had a full, didn't have a full, or did they have a?
They did have beer and wine only.
You were just asking for the same thing.
Was that a wine? That was wine, I think, too.
I thought you only.
Mr. Euro have beer only, or beer and wine?
Beer and wine.
Beer and wine, yeah, yeah.
Is he, is he willing to surrender his license?
No, because this property was bought by like a different owner, like now the, the owner of the building is a different thing, and then I am leasing from that owner. So I haven't had a chance to talk to the old, like the previous owner.
The, the, the whole building has been sold. So, um, V, who used to own that building and leased out the space there, um, sold it. And, uh, before V sold the building, the other business went out of business, they're not even around. So, uh, if we could contact them and ask them to surrender the license, I believe they would be willing to do that. I don't think there's any problem with that, otherwise the route we may have to go, if we don't have one, I'm not sure what the quote is on these. Then we, uh, you know, we could, uh, start the summons and complaint to revoke the license there and then reissue to this gentleman. So I think that would be our options if, uh, depending on how the committee wants to go about it, if, uh.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, if, you know, at the end of the month, it expires anyway, the current license that's there, given those circumstances, if the, they're out of business, the thing was sold.
It's not.
Grant, grant his effective January, or July first, and, uh, the other guy doesn't, you know, submit to the other guy not applying, and if he doesn't, then you're good, you don't have to go through the summons and complaint.
I move for approval as stated.
Have a second?
By attorney.
Any further discussion?
Sure.
So you understand you wouldn't be able to do it July first, you understand that?
You can open.
You can open, you can do beer and wine, do beer and wine till July first, that's okay? That's, that's, that's probably the soonest in all, in, in fact, that's as soon as we could get it for you anyway.
That's fine, but I have two different applications, one is for, uh, the remaining period of this year, and then another one is for the next year. So it'll be.
So we're gonna refund it?
Well, that, that remaining portion wouldn't happen unless you can get the other guy to, or you can contact him and he surrenders his license.
If you can contact him and he surrenders, we can't issue the license until he surrenders the other.
Yeah, I'm fine with like that, taking it from like the July first onwards, but as long as, I wanted to get it, um, I wanted to go through the process and then get it completed, like, uh, it's positive.
And then, and then application for this remaining license year, was that prorated?
Yeah, they're prorated.
Okay, so, so we're talking about fifty bucks or something?
This is the application that he has here.
Not prorated, it's, uh.
No, they're not prorated.
Yeah, no. The liquor ones, sorry.
Liquor ones.
Just, just so you know, this one right now in front of us here, uh, number sixty-nine is from two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
It's Craig, he wants to open up as soon as possible.
Right, so it was just one, one month?
So, but the other person hasn't surrendered it, so we can't give it.
Did he apply for the fourteen?
Has he applied for fourteen?
He did.
He did, okay.
It's not in here.
It's not on the agenda though.
I think we have it coming in the next meeting.
Okay. I would like to suggest that since, in reality, he's not getting it before July first anyways.
He could.
He could.
If we can get hold of the people to surrender the license.
But, but they have to surrender, that's a prerequisite before he gets one, you just can't, two licenses on that same property.
So what do you think the chances are, you have no contact with Mr. Euro?
No, I don't.
And the building, the building owner's a different guy than Mr. Euro's.
Right, yeah, well, maybe I might be able to contact it, contact him through the new owner, but I don't have, like, I haven't had.
I understand how tough it is trying to get a business started, I want to hit this guy up for a license, a full year license, that in reality, he's not gonna see one day.
Right, I, I think we would.
And if he's okay opening up July first, I'd like to say we refund his fee for the license, for the license year that expires June thirtieth. And let him open up July first under the, uh, license that I assume is.
But that's, but that's on the, is that on the agenda?
Yeah.
That's on the agenda, but.
Well, we gotta stick to the agenda.
I understand. So we stick to the agenda, yes, yeah.
So right now we have motion and second for approval of this license.
Right.
And so, but what, what we're saying is that he may not get.
As long as you understand that you may not even use this license, that's what, uh, you know, Alderman White was indicating, why, why would you wanna pay this money and not even get to use your license for four weeks? That's would not be.
Let's, um, approve in this particular license, subject to the returning or surrendering of the original license. If that can happen, this gets approved, if not, it, it doesn't get approved, correct? And then, and then at that time, we could vote again whether to refund him this money for the license here.
You can just do that right now.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to.
Never issued, because the other one doesn't surrender, he gets his.
You have motion on that thing?
I would like to offer an amendment that says that, yes, we approve his license, subject to the previous license is being returned.
Second.
And in the result, in the event that it doesn't happen, then he gets his.
All money back.
All your money back.
We, we have motion and second for the amendment. And we have any discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have the, we have the motion, uh, and second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Try to do a hold of that, that prior, uh.
You get a hold of it, you get the license back in here, you can get it this year yet, that you will be refunded your money and you'll open July first.
If you, Dave Bickler and Ted Gocilashevsky.
So do I need to appear again before the council?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
They say you need to appear again.
Another appearance, one.
Good luck to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have some, twenty-fourteen, thirteen, fourteen applications, you know, if you wave his, appear this morning, it's a new.
Well, right, yeah, but we didn't give him a little speech. He's a new operator, we didn't give him the speech.
Right, you're gonna have him appear again.
We might.
You just told him no.
Yeah. You just told him no?
Okay. I'm going in the speech personally.
Okay.
What, what authority was I speaking? They don't have to have him appear for his next license.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, here we have, uh, number seventy and seventy-one on tonight's agenda.
No, this is seventy, this is just seventy, Dave Bickler.
We have thirteen, twelve for the tavern renewal musical.
New agent, Dave Junior, Dan is in the hospital, you say?
Oh, he's, he's out, I'll be with him in Arizona, so.
And you guys have to come up with some agreement again.
Yeah, we gotta get a hold of Jenna Mertesacker.
Okay, because you guys know the routine.
Yeah.
You guys, another problem you buy down there?
No.
And you have a problem in First District, I don't believe it, you gotta, I don't, toss the Scott post or talk to Jenna Mertesacker tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, um, have a motion?
So, some of approval.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now seventy-one.
Bob, you, you will lock her.
Okay, just do, this is seventy-one and seventy-two, this way.
Right.
Uh, okay, uh, seventy-one is for the license, before we do anything on that, we have seventy-two, which was all the building code stuff with the fire.
Right.
And you had an attorney, you had to get an attorney, where does that stand?
It's, it's still up in here, they just screwed me around.
Who screwed you around?
The banks, there was like three different banks, and I'd contact them and they don't return my calls.
The bank's concerning what?
Alone, the, the loan is on the property, but the property that had burned down is behind the bar, and they thought the bar burned down. But the thing was that the bank sold the loan to another bank, and then that bank sold the loan to another bank, and now the bank of California has the loan.
So what?
And they kept the check, remember I showed you that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you showed me, us the check and everything, and I think at the time, we, we said that you need to get an attorney and get this all squared away, because this has, this has been sitting out there.
Since, since.
When was the fire?
Um, last year on, uh, fourteen of, of, um, Valentine's Day.
So this is over a year?
Yep.
That it's been sitting out here?
And I screwed, so right now.
Inspector, uh, I don't.
What I was gonna suggest is, uh, let me have a couple more months, and if I, if, if anything, um, could you be a little more leaning on the fines? And I'll see what I can do for putting windows in and stuff, but I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get.
The fines, this fire is taking so long to get this fixed?
Like, yeah, a thousand dollars per fine, I mean, for weeds, for the weeds and everything, that's.
Well, that's set for trial on July second, if you will, the judge will decide what your fines are gonna be, if, if any, so.
I'm having a very hard time, I, I'm out of work right now, after my, after I got in that accident for drunk driving in, uh, uh, what was it, August twenty-first of eleven? I've been clean since, so, uh, I'm kinda not in the bio business anymore, my wife runs that.
Okay, Ted, are you aware of this, uh, Louis Double Vision on Burnham Street?
Fifty-fifth and Burnham.
The fire?
I'm aware of orders on, we do have an immediate court to relieve, and that's why it's on your agenda.
Yeah.
Cause Jenna is informing your committee when we have municipal court, uh, summons complaints, and I'm not aware of the current status of the owner doing, this is a garage detachment on the property.
Right.
At a fire, and it's been, what, two years?
A year.
A year.
And I'm waiting for the banks, and they won't, we told them the check for the fire.
We have a problem, or the owner has a problem, and it's, as you can see, that picture, it doesn't adjust it, it's been boarded up with the boards on the inside and the studs on the outside. It looks like crap, as I'm saying, I turned it to my inspector and said to follow up, and I guess that's why you're in court.
Right.
I don't have, you know, I can't help him with the.
I don't know, if I just stick money in and put windows in.
Is the bar open now?
Oh, yeah, the bar's.
The bar's open and operating.
Right, and you guys have no complaint, no violations on it at all, it's never had any problems?
But, but we got your license for thirteen, fourteen here, and we still have this problem here.
But that has nothing to do with the bar, that's what I'm trying to say, I'm having a.
Well, it has to do with the bar, cause you're in violation of city code.
Because it's in the bar.
And, and it's our hammer that we have over you.
I understand.
In order for you to get, uh, get it fixed. Now, uh, it sounds to me like nothing has happened since the last time you came in front of us.
Right.
You know, and, and I understand, a lot of money costs the law, you know, to get a lawyer and everything, but I, 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 I don't.
In fact, I.
I'm not understanding why, you know, I don't know if you had insurance on it, or.
Yeah, insurance, I showed you the check.
Yeah, but.
They gave me the check.
They gave you the check, but you didn't get it fixed, because.
They won't give me the check, insurance won't, they have, it's a co-sign, because they have the loan, so they have to co-sign the check, and they won't co-sign the check.
I, I think we just need to back up you, it sounds to me you need a lawyer, because, because this sounds like.
But it's, I don't have the money, right now I'm in the process of trying to sell my house.
We need to do something, it's a neighborhood that needs to be repaired. Uh, if, if, if he put a window in there, I don't care if he's got a window, but he put a window in there, we wouldn't, I wouldn't even know and remember that there was a fire.
Um, I just don't know if I just stick my, if the banks.
Well, excuse me, in the meantime, the neighborhood has to look at this, blown out door.
I understand, I understand.
Right across the way is the, the new church that was going into the credit union.
Right.
And, I mean, you know, you've got the people trying to improve the neighborhood, and, well, a year later, you're saying it seems like it's longer.
You said Valentine's Day, year and a half.
You're in here in February.
So I, what can we do? Fine, a big, fine may be in order in court if you can't go to court.
Sixty, eight, nine, court?
Right.
Five thousand dollars, you have, you have a, a fine level against your judgment.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
On January twenty-third, that's, you're falling deeper and deeper into debt.
That's what I'm saying.
Not only is your pocketbook being blemished, but you're blemishing the whole community of that property.
And my credit.
Well, yeah, but.
Everything.
What are we supposed to do with you, what are we, what are we supposed to do with your business? I don't understand why, 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 I don't buy this building, I mean, this is an embarrassment to the city.
I understand.
And you expect people coming in the city, well, they're gonna buy a property up the street for, to raise their family, and you say, and take a look at this?
And you know, it's really bizarre, it was before the fire, it had all branded windows.
I understand, but then, and, and according to our, our city attorney, she's, she's spoken with an attorney representative mortgage company, and that, and they said that they're, they're not holding any checks.
And I got a letter from the insurance company, which I showed you last time, and they said that they are holding a check.
Is there any, is there any value right now to sell the property the way it is, can you sell it?
I'd lose out.
Well, you know, but, but, but why should the city and its, and its people lose out, because you're not doing it?
I was just wondering, okay, if I just go buy cheap windows and put windows in, is that gonna take someone to find?
You have to make him happy.
I don't know, yeah.
That's gonna be a temporary state, at least the discussion of what we see up there is not studs and plywood on the outside.
I'm not having windows on, I'm gonna have windows.
That's part of it, you have to deal with the inspector with regards to the other, can we leave it in a fire damage state up there? Right now, I need to get a window. Um, if you would like, I'll work with them and maybe have them come back at your next meeting.
So you wanna hold the license for, uh, thirteen, fourteen till next meeting?
Yeah.
It's with him, you're.
Will something happen in two weeks?
Uh, I'll try.
Just come back, let us tell, give us something positive.
Yes, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to somebody and.
Alderman Roat.
If I, if that's all I gotta do, is put windows in?
Just Alderman Roat and sweep.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I'm just concerned, and we.
I'm just, don't wanna stick.
My turn.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We always keep going back to this letter, and everybody keeps ignoring it, where it says, uh, that you've not been making your mortgage payments.
Uh, that's, I have no idea about my wife making payments or that.
Well, maybe she should be here then also, next time.
I don't stay, I'm not with her, so.
Is her name on the property?
Yeah.
Is it her property, or is it both of your property?
We keep, sorry. We keep hearing about this insurance check, and I, I never saw one, I don't think one ever existed, did it?
It's here, but you can't cash it, so, who owns the property? Who's the names on the property, both of yours?
Yeah.
And who has the license for the bar?
Both of us.
The license is in both names.
But you said you're not operating the bar, and your wife is.
Well.
That's what you told us, right?
Well, I'm, I, I still operate, but I'm not there, I don't, I don't hang around, I'm, I don't wanna get addicted to alcohol or drugs and everything, so. I'm just being honest with you, I'm trying to stay straight in there, and I was working with a guy building cabinets.
Does she know, that, does she, does she know that her license may be revoked?
No, well, yeah.
Maybe we oughta bring her in and let her know that.
If her name's on the property and she's operating the bar, I think we should have her in here in two weeks, I think we should have both of you in here in two weeks. Can you, and a picture of the brand new witness? That's gonna be in it two weeks. Can you get her address to the city clerk so we can send her a letter out?
It's the bottom of the address.
Does she live there?
Yeah.
She lives there.
So.
What's her name?
Pamela.
It's right on there. Pamela Ann.
You, you talked to her and, is it, this is a mess.
I know, it's screwed.
I, I can't hold on a license where I don't even know where we stand with this thing.
It's screwed up.
We don't know who owns the property, who's running the property, who, the place, it, it just, and this has been going on for a long time.
But your wife is still making all this money.
Yeah.
You're not getting half of it.
Okay, we're gonna hold it for a couple of weeks.
Making a payment.
You do what you can on the property, we're gonna call you both in for our next meeting, and, and be telling her she has to show up, you have to, she has to close the bar, but, because we gotta get this straightened out, or we're not gonna okay the license. Okay?
Yeah.
From a legal standpoint, though, she's been notified, because he's the agent of the corporation, we've notified him, so whether she knows it or not, she's been notified legally. Cause they chose the corporate method of licensing, and we've notified the agent, so, you know, if she doesn't show next time, I, I, I think you oughta just take that, that it doesn't matter, because. This is just dragged on and on, from a legal standpoint, she's been notified, because the agent was notified.
Okay, thank you. You understand that?
Yeah, two weeks from now.
Two weeks, you'll be, you'll, you'll be notified.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I'm Brian Millick. This is, this is, this guy's talking to him, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And Mohammed Rafi, they're involved with the same, it's the same, same property.
Is he here?
Yeah.
Mohammed, Mohammed here?
Mohammed's the prior owner, you say?
Yes.
Owner of the real estate and, or the business, or both?
Both.
And you now are the new owner of the real estate and business?
Seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five. Okay, no, he talked to you last time about all this money that's outstanding. And, so what has happened since the last time we seen him?
Nothing happened, I explained.
Yeah, he, he and his corporation, the nineteen sixty-two Friends, Inc., well, it's called Friends, Inc., uh, isn't liable for any of those personal property taxes or the real estate taxes. That's prior operator for the personal property taxes and a prior owner for the real estate taxes, so he's not gonna have any obligation for that, um, unless and until somebody can prove that this is just a shadow corporation to avoid that. From what I understand, it's not, they're two completely different people, for lack of a better word, who used to own it, and he now wants to buy the property and, and run it. So I, I don't think the, the back taxes issue is anything other than a tax caution for the city to use separately. For here, it's just a question of, does he have all his checks in a row to get a license? And right now, I know one thing that he's missing is, uh, the Friends, Inc. doesn't have control of the property. There's a land contract from the, who does all the real estate taxes, RNG Real Estate LLC, to Hassan LLC, which I understand is basically this gentleman. Uh, so he needs to do a lease between Hassan LLC and Friends, Inc. to get that aspect taken care of. I have no idea whatever other, if he's had inspections from all the various departments or not, but.
So.
He's, he'll be good to go on the taxes, and he can correct the.
So he just lives out on all that money? We go after, obviously, he's gonna have, he obviously doesn't have any.
Right, personal property taxes, we, we go after like we normally do, real estate, that'll get paid by the county and go on, and ultimately, uh, unless he works it out with the county, because he'll own the property, but they could still foreclose on it, because they'll have the tax limits on the property, so.
Actually, I discussed with the GM, you know, the general manager of the bank, and he said he will make arranged before they do something, either foreclose or they accept my offer, to do, make sure whoever's get the deal, they pay, they are payable back taxes, which previous owner owe that. So sooner or later, you know, bank have to pay the previous tax.
How long, how, how long have you all, have you, have you known Mohammed Rafi?
I don't know him.
Or you don't know him at all?
No.
Who are you dealing with then? The bank?
I'm dealing with the bank and his other partner, which is Rajesh, who owned the RNG company.
So we just get stiffed?
Well, not what, the property tax we don't get.
Right.
But the, uh, personal property tax.
Personal property tax, how many years he been behind that? He's like maybe a year or so.
Oh, I was.
It's just like, what? Couple hundred dollars, some.
So Scott, what, what, what's your recommendation, just?
Approve subject two.
To the usual conditions.
Yeah.
Some movements, Chairman.
That's number seventy-three.
Yeah.
You said they can issue a letter to the bank.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? You got a question?
Just to clarify, the motion was to approve subject to necessary requirements.
Right, correct, yeah, it's approval.
Is Mohammed around at all anymore?
I have no idea, I've never seen him.
You operate in the place now?
Yeah, I'm there now.
Yeah, that's right, you tell us, yeah. Do you have a question here, Monica?
Well, it's just that Mohammed has been requested to appear a few times now, and he never shows up. And typically, we would have someone turn in that license before issuing a new one.
I already did.
Did you turn it in? You found it?
Yes, I did, yeah, I found the licenses, and I bring it to the, you know, the lady.
They were hanging on the wall in there, yeah?
Yes. She requested me to bring previous one before we issue, so I paid the fee.
Here, here.
And I bring the previous, you know, because there was on the wall.
Okay, uh, do we have any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and then, then seventy-four and seventy-five, we just kind of hold on to?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Benjamin Allen.
Yeah, it's that, right.
Okay. Okay.
Well, you have to bring in whatever paperwork you, you get from the bank, whatever that is. Now, you have to cheat sheets and see all the things that have been done.
Yes. That's what I was hoping. Okay, this is for, this is a, uh, new application.
Bring your paperwork in.
Uh, okay, doggos.
Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, let's see, fill it out.
Mr. Chair.
All in a row?
Benjamin, a couple of things, just hope I'm not stealing your, your Alderman Weigl. But, um, there's a lot going on in oh-ten that were missed under the, you know, this question, have I ever been arrested, ticketed, convicted?
Okay.
I mean, I guess there's possession, there's two possessions that trouble me in oh-ten.
Okay.
June and, uh, December. You wanna share anything with us?
Uh, might have just overlooked it, honestly, um, some of those charges came at, like, in the same occurrence, so I wasn't sure if I was ticketed for all of that stuff, or, um, I mean, I wasn't, wasn't attempting to hide anything, I was just like, I, I, I wasn't totally, uh, informed on what I needed as far as filling out this application to start, so I didn't have all this stuff fresh in my, in my memory, I didn't, wasn't sure.
Alright, and then December, December first, how much did you have? It says possession of marijuana, Franklin.
Um, it wasn't, it wasn't substantial, amount is maybe three, three grand or something like that. I'm, I'm not sure.
There was two possessions.
Yeah, one, one was Meskego.
And one was Franklin.
So you get busted in Meskego in two thousand ten? You just continue to smoke pot and walk around with it? Is that the?
I just wasn't in the right friend group at that time.
It's not that long ago.
No, and, uh, I've, I mean, I've separated myself from those people, uh, yeah, I've.
Okay, on your application, you got possession of, it sounds like possession of paraphernalia, is that what you have written here? But if, but both of these were possession of marijuana, one was Meskego, one was less, so doesn't even have a.
I thought the Meskego one, I, I didn't recall that one being a possession of marijuana, I mean.
Possession of twenty-five grand?
If it is, if.
Or less convicted, Meskego.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not arguing that, I, um, and after the, after the second time, I did enter into a counseling.
You're using some problems with southwestern suburbs of Hills Corners, Meskego, Franklin, underage drinking, and.
That was, that was all the one I was getting.
Two thousand ten there.
Myself, you know, and, and consistent on this all the time, we have all these problems in the bar with drugs. And it's one of our, one of our biggest places that we have problems, and these people are tired of hearing it, but, uh, and so, and this one is not that long ago, and so, so, you know, I can't support this at this time, but, um, anybody, if I ask, first of all, do I have any motion or anything?
I'll move for denial based on the record.
Second. Second, I wrote, any further discussion?
The, the only discussion that, that I'm gonna have, it, it's, and again, it is extremely difficult because of this timeframe, that it's just not that long ago, it's, it's just a hair over two years. However, when you look at it, from that point on, I mean, you, you literally have nothing except the speeding in Whitewater after that time period, so you're on the right path. I would agree with Alderman Chaplesky, at this particular point, I don't believe I can support this either, because of, of how that it just, the occurrence wasn't that long ago, but staying in that same path, and like, you know, a year, two years from now, and, and you stay clean, you know, I, I would consider it different.
And it just adds also a kind of, um, bit of a, a nice direction to you. No, I, I don't think it's, I think it's pretty, uh, when, when you, when you read this application, in terms of setting forth convictions and, and the violations, includes the traffic offenses, and, you know, future, uh, employer, prospective employers have a way to act as a nation, and you take a look at how honest someone is, and even if it's a marginal, uh, employment scenario, I mean, why don't you lose a job because it just didn't put everything down? But oftentimes, employers give credit for just that, you put everything down, and, and you, you have, back when, that same timeframe, going back to ten thousand, to two thousand ten, you had speeding, and you had, you know, you had number of speeding, uh, violations, and just, you can't forget all those, these, these things, because you, you know, I, I, I don't, this is a difficult application, just because it's, everything's on such a short timeframe, where I can, and we know that, you, you, you rehabilitated, you know, you know what type of job you're applying for here, and, uh, but I think some days are better off not letting you do this type of work right now, come back in the future date, future years.
Understood, um.
Are you working right now?
I, no, she hasn't been letting me until this, this goes through, but, um.
No, I know, you, what, any type of job, are you doing any type of work?
Oh, um, well, I was just transferring over to hear from a sports bar, I was just a server at a sports bar, I wasn't bartending there, um.
Where's that?
It was out in Brookfield, uh, Bullwinkle Sports Bar.
Okay, and then the motions, Chairman?
Um, I would just like to say, um, in that two thousand ten year, it was just, you know, going into my freshman year of college, and, well, didn't, didn't entirely make the right choices at that time, and I, like I said, I did attend, uh, a counseling for that.
Yeah, but it's just.
After that last one.
We're accountable to, to the, the people of the city, and, you know, anybody sees this, you know, they're not gonna go there, but so.
Understood.
So we're sorry, but, uh, any further discussion here? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Sorry.
We're not bad guys, we're just gonna give you some direction, you know?
So, so I can't appeal or anything, I, but, no, I just, alright, thank you.
Good luck. At least that P and H.
I don't see a single.
Move for, for denial.
Subject seventy-seven.
Because of.
The second out appearance.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Jennifer Ogden.
Any female?
Uh, appearance of letter, interesting.
We'll move on.
Is that second appearance?
Yeah, second appearance.
It says the, the, the first letter was addressed, letter was addressed incorrectly, the second request was returned to us, we called Jennifer, and she's out of town.
What was returned to us? So she mean, I lived there anyway? But she must not be interested, because she, she, she made an application for a license, and she just doesn't show up, doesn't contact anyone.
Did, do you, you said she was out of town, so you, somebody talked to her?
Someone in the office must have talked to her, if you see that note.
Anne?
I think it's Anne.
Yes, yes. And someone talked to her, so let's hold it.
Yeah.
Just some.
Eric Miller, Melarid.
Is that valid?
Yeah.
With intent. To, uh, that she was gonna sell.
Oh, yeah. Okay, this is, this is a, a renewal. Uh, you know why you're here?
Guessing from my OWI.
Yes, now. That's your first one, or is that your second one?
First.
First and only.
Never again.
Okay, well, you know, obviously, you know, if we call you in again, if you get another one, call you again, we can give you license, you know, wait for that, and, because you have the responsibility of making sure that the people you're serving are not, uh, drunk, and if you're drunk, you know, you can't do that job properly.
Yep.
So, uh, you can watch it and, uh, you know, be careful.
What do you intend on working, Eric?
Uh, I work right now at the Walker Inn, seventy-four, the Walker, been there for a while.
Call nine, if you get a license, call nine-one-one.
This is a renewal.
Or the real case.
Yeah, send them.
Move approval.
Second.
Now that's right now. Second, but was it bars all?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Aye. Jacob Marks. See, they got, I have a Jacob. No, that was Ace.
It's the Ace shoulder.
Ace, Ace, so.
Hi, do you want to share?
Let me tell me, didn't you see that? Okay, uh, is he here? Is Jacob Marks here? Oh, I thought he was standing.
Nope, Jacob Marks.
Yeah, I thought that was him that got up, that must have been a ride.
Okay, this is the second time?
Second time.
Okay.
We'll move, uh, we'll move, uh, place the file.
We'll move to the.
The line is placed away.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Benjamin?
Catricus.
Catricus?
Yeah, you guys, you guys.
What was you guys saying? So, uh, is this for another seller's permit?
May.
Okay, you have a seat. Thanks. Okay. Get the application. Okay, is everybody?
You must have had a cheat sheet with you.
Okay, uh, you're going to be, you're going to be selling.
Uh, storm damage dress.
Going door-to-door selling.
Uh, yes.
Well, you wrote down.
I don't think he wrote down the back everything, that's not his handwriting, is it? That's just.
Is this, is this handwriting on the back here?
Can I see it, please?
Back of the application.
And back of the application.
You wrote on your.
No, 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 that, 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 that's our offices.
Detective order.
Yeah, he just put down, yeah, OWI, November eleventh.
Oh, okay, I see at the bottom.
November, November eleventh.
So, Mr. Chairman?
All in a row.
On number seven.
Yes.
On your application, it says, have you ever been ticketed, arrested, convicted, or fined for any violation, federal, state, or city, including felonies, misdemeanors, civil offenses, and traffic offenses? You wrote, you, you just wrote OWI was Dallas eleven-eleven, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
No, not for one. And when we have your record, I don't know if I want to read this, but it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
It's been that many?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, it's almost the second page and not quite. Um, and you listed one. May I ask why you lied on your application?
Um, I actually, she was approved back in two thousand, incident nine or two thousand, incident ten, with, um, a company called Top, Tabata Construction, um, and so I put down, like, um, any major offenses from there, um, 'cause that's kind of what I did on my last, um, couple of, um, permits, I guess, or requests for permits, and all of them did get accepted in, um, other cities, I guess, um, and so that's why. I just thought to write down the OWI.
You're selling storm damage restoration?
Yes.
Okay, are, are you aware that there's a warrant out for you?
Yes, and that is paid.
Mr. Chair.
That is paid, I don't have it.
Mr. Chair. All in a row. Chief Padgett said he's good to go.
Well, you have to say. Okay. So you did.
Thank you.
Check in, okay, um. I don't know, I don't know, I, I, looking at all these things, and, and because of your, you're filling out the application barely.
Only one would be here.
I, uh, you know, what we're doing here is we're.
This is every statement.
We're allowing you to knock on doors in people's houses, and it's just.
Yeah, um, I mean, I didn't, like, or that's how I did, like, all my, um, other ones too, like, um, it back in, like, two thousand and ten. in like 2010. Well, or I did probably about eight or nine of them back in.
In other, in other cities?
Yeah, and, or that's kind of how I did them and all of them got approved.
But this is a new one here, right?
Yes. And that's kind of why from my past experiences, I thought that would be acceptable, I guess.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Wago.
I see, you know, hindering an officer, I see underage alcohol, I see theft by virtue of employment. What, what is that in '09 in Brookfield?
It was in '09.
Yeah, don't make it sound like it was 50 years ago.
No, I just thought it was.
More recent than that?
Yeah.
And what was that about?
That was, when I worked for Boston Store, it was just kind of like a thing that me and this cowork, or coworker had. I actually ended up confessing to it and that's, because like I couldn't take it anymore. I was just kind of.
So you were stealing from the people you worked for?
Yes.
I'm going to move for denial based on the record, I'm sorry. I don't want this guy walking around my neighborhood knocking on doors.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is for denial. Do I have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Yeah, there's just too much there.
Look, he just follows you around.
Sorry.
But you have eight other cities you can work in, right?
Ace.
Ace is there. Ace, okay, we asked you to come back because?
Bring some proof of what I said on my application.
Did, did you get that in?
I tried to bring it in to the. Yep, sorry. Attorney lady today and she was off to court, so I have printed up what was on the website and my attorney asked him to send me a copy of the particulars and he just emailed it to me this afternoon, so I have it to show to you on my email. And I have a copy of the case number that the misdemeanor was under.
Okay. You don't want to be.
Yeah, but.
I think we all did because it was, we're looking at this big unfair trade general contractor violating this and that, and you said it was all because of the size of font?
Yes.
On a contract?
Wrong font size and not putting starting and ending dates was the two misdemeanors.
And we still don't have that in front of us?
Yeah. We said get that to the clerk's office, they made copies and get, get that to us.
We got nothing.
And you had two weeks to do that.
No, I had a week.
Yeah. Well, that was one week.
Yeah, we had our.
And I contacted my attorney the next day and he just got it to me this afternoon and I have it on my phone to show, show you.
Yeah, you know, I'm not.
If that's good enough.
Sorry. The font's too small.
I should try reading this.
So what is that, Scott?
How can you be?
Nothing, it says the same thing as what our report says.
Doesn't verify.
Just he's found guilty of those two misdemeanors, that doesn't. Clarifying.
Okay, can?
No clarifying information.
Can we hold it for another two weeks? Let's hold it and let, get that to the.
We need something that's more fleshed out detail that says that, not just a case number and, you know, it's got, you know.
I was relaying on my attorney and he just got it to me today and I have no way.
So maybe you got two more.
Put the pressure on them.
Okay. Just get them and get it.
And then we go from there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now this is number six. This was the Roberto Herrera.
Yes.
Okay, this is the one that, the vote went three in favor, a Wago voting no, and Gary wasn't there. Now, before reporting out today, pointed out, and I don't remember, I don't remember seeing it.
No, 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 no. That's, okay. Oh, Roberto Herrera? Or, I'm confusing Hernandez.
What was his record?
Yeah, that was Hernandez that had that.
Okay, so that's, okay.
Who's his record again?
I have it right here. Here's his application. The chair and I had a, had a.
We confused the record.
And he actually has an underage alcohol intent and a OWI arrest this St. Patrick's Day. And I voted no on this.
Because of the not failure to put, you know, put your record down.
And, but see what happened is that, you know, we looked at this before the meeting, that's why we held it, and it turns out it's, it's somebody else.
It was a bad ombre there.
Yeah. So, so basically, it still stands the way it is. We'll just read it out from there, or do we have to re-vote on this? You brought it back to committee.
Yeah, but if you're not changing anything, you're just reporting it back over again.
I just wanted to say something on that too, and I, I know that was a mistake not to put down that I got a OWI, but at the time that I filled out that application, I, I was ticketed, but I wasn't, I didn't go to court, I wasn't charged with anything yet, so.
But the, but it says here, have you been ticketed?
Right, yes.
Arrested?
I'm sorry about that, you're right, that's very correct, I did not.
And you didn't put down your underage alcohol?
No, sir.
At all either?
No, and that honestly, I mean, that slipped my mind a little bit, that's something, I knew you guys had a background check, I wasn't hiding anything, you know.
And how'd you get here today?
It's just unfortunate, my mom actually dropped me off.
She's coming back to pick you up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, we, we had this vote last time, now.
So reporting, I think Gary can just.
You weren't here.
No, I was there, Gary wasn't.
Gary wasn't here.
You're just reporting it back out?
Yeah, we'll just leave it the same.
Otherwise, we need a motion to reconsider and go through all that voting and re-vote again.
So we're just going to report that out the same way it was?
No.
Okay? So when we go back on the floor, we'll vote it out again. I'm sorry for the misunderstanding. Okay?
So I.
Okay, we're going to.
Just go to the council room for about a half hour, you'll know one way or the other.
Less than a half an hour.
Then you jump into a.
Your number, you're number six.
By the gentleman standing right at that.
When we're reading the numbers, your number six. Okay, now that we have, that's our last person here, so we have number 56, it's an ordinance. What exactly is this Alderman Wago?
This is about, you remember we went through this with this car lot that started where the, the business? A license was granted for a business to do business at a location, then they lost the control of the location, stopped paying their rent. And this will allow us to.
And the, the owner then wanted the license.
Yeah, the owner wanted to open up.
Because we have an outstanding license there.
Right.
So if I.
It'd be just like what we had here with this.
It's the same thing for all other licenses in front of chapter nine, like, like we do for liquor licenses. If, if it becomes vacant or unused, someone can file a complaint to get it so that we can revoke it and they can not proceed. It's essentially what it is for all other licenses.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Here's 57 for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Okay, then we have 58.
Through 62?
62.
Move, move closer to necessary requirements, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Alderman Ro, second?
Sure.
Yeah, you did.
Sure, I heard.
Any further discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Yep, and so, and now we have to wait.
Yeah, I confused Roberto.
I'm not going to say it.
No.
Okay, we have number 63. Yeah, this is the one on the corner, I believe. Anyone that? Outside the back door of the tavern. Now, is this actually on city property? That was my concern on that.
68 and that, that's the pub.
Oh, no, no, okay, it's the one next to it, so they have their own, their own.
They have a parking lot.
Yeah, they have.
This is not, that's, this isn't.
Mr. Chair? Six o'clock.
Second.
Six o'clock.
You're going to end at six? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
64, 65.
Move approval subject requirements, Mr. Chair.
66.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed?
We're still going to be Roseley, I think.
And number 67 and 68, 67?
68, 67, no, 67, 68.
67 and 68.
Approval. Is that subject to necessary requirements? As, as always.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion carries. I believe that's it.
Oh, what a mess you're building.